Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented, Your Honor.
Support. Moved by Lennon and supported by Martin. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Martin, you want to call the roll again?
Councilmember is Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Diana and Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Our next item of business would be presentations, and we have three presentations this evening. And Councilman Martin, I believe you're the first one on the Housing Commission update report.
Absolutely. Um, we have a slide deck.
Pretty sure you don't want the chief operating now.
So let's start talking while they figure out the slide deck. Just by way of background, and most of you know this already, on June 15th, the Housing Commission received a report from the Department of Housing and Urban Development citing a number of items that they feel were issues that needed to be addressed. Around that same time, the news was continuing to break about the executive director and her removal from that position, as well as we had a large number of residents from Autumn House come to the city council and expressed a great deal of dissatisfaction with the conditions of the facilities. And that coupled on the other side, candidly, it's been a rough first two quarters for the staff, and they were fatigued and tired and beaten up a bit. So all the way around, it was kind of a tough situation. Shortly thereafter, Ann Heller and I joined the board, and we were elected president and vice president of the Housing Commission. And so in response to all of these incidents, we kind of tracked this and went after this in a couple of different manners. And this is what we've just been able to accomplish over the course of the summer. Okay, the first was really around tightening financial controls. There was considerable attention and effort to look at how money was spent, how policies were or were not followed, what controls were in place to secure the financial resources that the Housing Commission has. So we created an audit and finance committee that's being put together now under the commission. And so in that, when the commission gets their report and their financial reporting, it's rather thick, a lot to go through. We were getting financial professionals together to go through that and make a report out to the commission. So there's another level of control and another set of eyes to it. We've also rewrote the expenditure policies and who can spend money and how and on what, and what that approval process looks like. There were a number of unnecessary assets that were called into question either by us or by HUD, including a Dodge Charger, which we're taking bids on now to sell, if anybody wants to bid on the Dodge Charger. And there's also an inoperable ban that we're going to be moving to a donation process to a charity. It's just not worth selling it, but with HUD, you've got money, you've got so many regulations you need to follow on how to do that. There were some questionable credit card practices that we ended and worked through the accounts with, and we revised the reporting requirements to us from the fee accountant. So that's the financial piece. The facilities were another really interesting challenge.
Oh, up there.
Okay, that didn't matter. So the first thing that happened almost immediately was through the volunteer and donation of the Ferndale Community Foundation, there was some landscaping that was done. And actually, the cool thing about that is it was installed by volunteers and residents of the facilities themselves. There's a considerable amount of plumbing work that's caused damage to particularly Autumn House, and we have bids out now for some service work to correct those, and that's going to be a significant amount of work. Years ago, there was a cleaning service that came in and kept the common areas up and the carpets cleaned and went through the common areas to make sure things were tight. At some point, that was removed and eliminated, and it fell to the work of the folks who were in maintenance, which impacted the production of the maintenance crew as well. And so we're bringing back the cleaning crews, and there's bids out for that right now as well. And hopefully we'll have those in, and someone started by the end of the month to keep things spruced up. Air conditioning was a major concern, especially in Autumn House with the heat over the course of the summer. And we did review the electrical capacity, that they handled those air conditioning units, and we're just not certain that it was going to accept the load of buying individual units there. So we are looking at the entire capital plan, which is laid out over the next couple of years, and are completely reprioritizing it. We just candidly didn't agree with the prioritization that the former executive director put in there and how those funds would be expended. The funds that council has extended to the Housing Commission will be a part of that in that entire plan, so it's out methodically. But there are some things, for example, that were scheduled out in 2017 that just have to be taken care of this year. So we're reordering, reprioritizing, taking things off, like buying a new car for the Housing Commission. They won't have vehicles anymore, but that was on the plan for upcoming years. So we've gone through the entire capital plan and readjusted it and rebuilt it and got feedback from HUD as well. From a standard of governance, we completely redid the bylaws and revised the policy and procedures that are in place, many of which haven't been around or haven't been reviewed in years. In fact, we created a policy for policies that say all workflow and procedures and policies will be reviewed on an incremental basis. So these things come back for a review once a year, or maybe two years, depending upon the policy. We added additional meetings. So previously, the Housing Commission met on one Wednesday a month. We changed that to two Wednesdays a month, every other Wednesday. And on Wednesdays where the Housing Commission doesn't meet, the residents were really craving communication that just doesn't apply itself to Robert's Rules of Order. So the commission meeting is for the commission to get their business done, and yes, there's public input and comment there, but the back and forth dialogue just wasn't meeting the needs of the residents. So on Wednesdays when the commission doesn't meet, we meet and sit down with the residents back and forth between Whittington and Autumn House. So every Wednesday, there's something going on at the Housing Commission, whether it's just to sit down and meet and greet and brainstorm ideas with the residents, or it's the formal commission meeting. And some of the good stuff that's come out of that conversation, too, is things that really are getting the residents more engaged. For example, there's one individual who lives at Whittington that's going to start a community newspaper for the residents to be shared. And, you know, I'll do a column, and we'll have columns from workers and employees. And having that information that's out there, that's just good to know to feed the residents and help start building a sense of community. We're also working on some social activities as well, just to build and again foster that environment. We went down and spent an afternoon with HUD to review the findings and go over the report, and we've met every deadline with the HUD report with updates that needed to be applied and things that needed to be addressed. The final one is due at the end of this month, and there's no reason I think we will not meet that. We're on track to accomplish that. We still have the interim executive director in place, and we brought in customer service training over the summer for the staff as well, different ways to interact with people, how to talk to folks, and vice versa. We also, to address the air conditioning concern in the facilities, opened up the common rooms that do have air provided by the Housing Commission, so people can go in and spend their time there. We replaced the cable boxes, so now they have cable in those rooms, so they have something they can do if they want to come in and do. And we've installed the new pot machines in one of them. The second one's coming Thursday, I'm told. So that's pretty much it. There's a lot of moving parts. This is what we've accomplished, and we're continuing to push forward and move forward. I think that I'm very proud of the staff and the work that they've been doing. I'm very proud of the remaining commissioners who Ann and I joined that have kind of stuck through a pretty tough schedule for the summer to be engaged. And the residents continue to bring concerns and issues forward. Everything isn't fixed by a long shot, but we've started down that journey and down that path, and that infrastructure's in place to allow us to finish it. And I really do respect and want to thank the residents for their engagement in that process and their willingness to show up on Wednesdays and work with us and talk with us. So I think we're moving in a good direction. That's my report.
That's beautiful.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions?
Just a comment real quick, Mayor. I'm so happy that you and Ann are on that board, because this has been a thorn in our side for numerous amount of years. And one question is, you say you opened up the common areas with the air conditioning to the residents. Were they closed before? They could not access them?
Yeah, there was previous issues where incidents occurred that shouldn't have occurred there. And so in response, the previous executive director shut off access to them. So we opened them back up.
Very good. Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, I just want to echo. I mean, you've been on the board for four months?
About that.
About that. So an incredible amount of work and effort to address some very serious concerns. I want to thank you and Ann tremendously. Thank you very much.
It's going well. We did also, I didn't mention it, I'm sorry, just to interject it, we also replaced the legal counsel, where there was some concern there. So we now have new legal counsel. Who's quickly getting on board?
Well, I know, you know, our free time is limited, and you've spent a considerable amount of yours doing this, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate, she's not here tonight, but Crystal Proxmire did a lot of work to bring a lot of these issues forward originally, and I want to thank her for that. And I guess the last person I want to thank, and I have to bring up an issue there, is HUD is challenging whether or not we can actually appoint a councilperson to that position. But our city attorney feels confident that we can, and we're challenging that. And I want to thank Congressman Levin, whose office has gone to bat for us, to try to make that point with HUD. So hopefully, that will get resolved shortly as well.
Yes, much appreciated.
Yeah, so thank you.
So what I'll do, my intent then is to bring a report back every couple of months and let you know how we progress. I also want to compliment April and the city. I mean, you want to talk about partnerships that didn't exist before. I mean, Lloyd, Joe, you know, there's been so many people involved. April, Barb Miller is our new recording secretary for the commission meetings. And they just, I think, I'm really pleased how the city has stepped up to really be a willing partner for these folks.
Excellent. Thanks, Dan. Appreciate you.
If I may.
Yes.
I just appreciate you bringing our high level of standard of operations to this organization. And as you just mentioned, Mayor, the amount of resources that the city is spending in order to help and elevate the standard of governance there is incredible. And so I know we have a long way to go, and you've definitely, I think, brought back some element of trust to the Housing Commission. And I know it's just laying some new groundwork there, but you definitely have our support and appreciation. So thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Our next presentation this evening will be the September Beautification Awards. And who's presenting those this evening?
Robin.
Ah, Robin is the lucky.
And it's the August.
Oh, it is? But then it's not what the agenda says.
We present them in September, but it is for the month of August.
All right.
All right. I believe we have some photos. It seems we've had a little technological opportunity with some of that.
While we're waiting, you could explain the photo on Facebook if you wanted.
I was going to ask about that.
You don't have to.
Which photo are you referring to?
Oh, well, I only saw one today.
One of the flowers?
No, there, I didn't see any flowers.
You're dressed up for something today.
I thought, is it Halloween? No, it's not Halloween.
If you're referring to my Facebook profile photo, myself and Jerome are members of an organization called Professional Floral Communicators International, and it is under the auspices of the Society of American Florists. And so every year, we have a convention. And, you know, being the people that like to sit on their hands and do nothing, not. Jerome and I are always very involved in that organization. I'm actually on the Board of Trustees for the PFCI. And as part of our duties, we have two events during the convention that we're responsible for. One is a more of a, we call it premier product showcase, where we're showcasing various new products in the industry and discussing them. The other is a floral design contest. It's the longest-running floral design contest in the U.S. called the Sylvia Cup. And so as part of that, the cup always has a theme for each year, and it's a secret. The designers do not know what they're receiving, whether flowers, products, tools, whatever. They are not given any information regarding the contest until 15 minutes before the contest, and they have two hours to do three arrangements. And it's designers from all over.
The iron chef of the floral world.
It is. And then 15 minutes into it, they're given another item that they must use. And then 30 minutes into it, they're given a second item that they must use. Well, this particular contest was based on, I'm sure you've seen a performance or no of Cirque du Soleil, so we instead had to name it for trademark infringement purposes, Cirque de Fleur. And so we were all dressed as silly circus clowns.
Well, it's worth checking out if you're Facebook friends of Robin's. If you're not, you should be just for that reason alone. But we digress.
Yes. So this past month, August, the Ferndale Beautification Commission has selected the following properties for recognition. The first, the commercial award, goes to Constructive LLC, which is located on 901 Liversnoy. This particular property is managed in the general counsel of the business is Stephen Winter. He said he had been landscaping it since 2005. And indicative of their product, the landscape is clean, contemporary, and low maintenance. They're particularly proud of the Hinoki cypress, which is growing there in the landscape, and it is being used to guide their future tree and shrub selections. And in the words of a couple of our council members, "It is a temple to the mid-century modernism. A welcoming natural lobby is created by the bordering of the low boxwood hedge and is accented by the carpet of lush greenery and stone features." By the way, the product that they design, they don't actually manufacture, I believe, is a carbon fiber reinforced concrete building component. So obviously, the organic features of their landscape helps add a little green to their business.
Thanks.
Is anyone present here from Constructive LLC? Oh, awesome. Well, we have certificates that we'll be doing. And just so you all know, in the past, the Beautification Commission has always waited until the end of the year and given certificates to all of the winners for the three months. Next year, we anticipate doing that on a monthly basis, so that they can attend and receive their certificate. The next property, residential award, goes to 931 Allen. It is owned by David Ignish, and he has been there since 2008. And in his words, "He has eliminated some of the green space," otherwise known as lawn, "to reduce maintenance. However, he has maintained some for his fur baby, his dogs. He gets most of his inspiration from commercial landscaping for their more cleaner, modern lines. The very prominent line of Hosta provides a low-maintenance boundary without actually hiding the house. We thought it was just a very beautiful, clean The next residential property is 1056 Whittington. This house capitalizes on confident material choices to create a modern, sun-loving front garden. Borrowing from French gardening styles in its use of symmetry and height building statuary, its low-slung, neat perennials and ground covers, as well as a signature willow cultivar are perfect for thriving in the summer heat. Healthy oak and birch trees frame the garden view and by contrast have been underplanted with shade-dependent species, resulting in a lush landscape from sidewalk to backyard. And this home is owned by Jason and Christine Knight, and they have been there, I believe, for the last four years. Is Jason and Christine here?
Yeah.
We would like to present this to you.
I'm assuming this is not Jason.
Everyone needs a weed puller.
Of course she is.
No, no, she's... Beautiful. Well done.
All right. The next property is 331 Jewel, and this is the home of Wayne Gillick and Joe Lombardo. It was built in 1939 and last renovated in 2002. They, we, the commission, just thought it was quite simply charming. The house with its white window boxes, white wood trim and wicker furniture, it's very inviting. The red Japanese maple picks up on the red tones in the roofing and provides a beautiful splash of color against the more neutral backdrop of the home and its simple but effective landscape. Is Joe or Wayne here? Well, we will be giving them their certificates later. The next residence. This one is 2514 Bonner, and it is the residence of Bob and Mary This little diamond in a rough was built in 1949. It's less than 700 square feet, and it was purchased two years ago by Bob and Mary, and they have certainly given it a lift. A former HUD house, this little bungalow, was given a facelift through not only color and shutters, but a more pleasing landscape. Prior to the change, it was a study in gray and gray and gray, and a very large tree, which was removed, I believe by, otherwise known as Lenny, is here in the audience.
Yeah.
Would you like to say anything?
Since I retired from Lenny's, we closed the doors a couple of years ago.
Come into the mic, Bob, just so we can all hear you. Yeah, come on over so we can hear you. Sure.
15 seconds in the sound, honey.
Yeah, since I retired over at Lenny's Coffee Center and closed the doors, we bought this house over here, because we, as you know, a lot of you know, we had 12 kids, and we got rid of our seven-bedroom house over in University. Any older kids were getting in college and wanting to move back in the house, and I said, "Wayman, Mary." I think we'll buy a two-bedroom house. And we did that at that point. And seeing that I do a lot with the city, I went up and down the streets, and I volunteered my services to work on gardens and lay grass, you know, whatever they want to do, painting and everything. And I really enjoy doing that, and it just helps beautify the neighborhood.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
All right. Are there any others who are present that we had told them that they would be receiving their certificates also this month, but it appears there was a little opportunity, shall we say? Anyone else? Awesome. And let's see, I believe that is James, Queen, and Jeremy Locke. Correct. Congratulations. They were one of the winners in June. They're at 3261 Grayson, and we will be sending the certificate to you. Did you want to tell us anything about the house?
Yeah.
Well, you did a lovely job. Thank you. All right. Upcoming nominations. We will have block awards. Those nominations are due September 21st, for those who are wanting to nominate a block for that award. You can go to our Facebook page, the Ferndale Beautification page, and there are links there that can take you to the various forums that you need to do that for. And then the next one is the Bootiful Ferndale Awards, the Bootification. Those nominations are due by October 21st, and they obviously center around Halloween decor. And then finally, upcoming nominations for holiday light displays, and we will have a date for you at the next meeting for that. And other than that, I believe we have covered them all. Thank you.
Great. Well done. Thank you. Appreciate it. And congratulations to all the winners. Yes. All right. Our final presentation this evening is a parks update. And Lloyd or Jill were together, or both of you are handling this presentation?
Hopefully. My presentation is heavily reliant upon some slides, so I think we got it figured out.
All right.
Okay. First 2015 Parks Project Report. Next slide, please. This is a representation of the city's park system. The yellow indicates areas where we have made improvements. The purple, I guess, fuchsia, are improvements that will be made prior to the year end. And green are the remaining parks that have not yet had improvements. Next slide, please. As councilors are aware, the first park that we completely revamped was Garbert Park, and that was just, I think, May or June. New play structure, new fall zone, repair of the remaining equipment, creation of earth playmounds, rehabilitated the walking path, addition of recycling containers, creation of a new soccer field, which, if you haven't been there since the opening, is something that DPW has done recently. Elevation, I'm sorry, evaluation and trimming of the park's tree canopy, removal of the hockey rink, and installation of restroom automated locks. Future improvements still to be done to the park include new park signs, which are being manufactured currently by DPW and will be installed also before the year end. And we are also still in the design and planning stage for the safety town, which the asphalt that remains from the hockey rink will be used for. Next slide, please. Oppenheim Park, donated play structure relocated at very little cost to the city, and all the existing, I should also mention that as we go through each park, we are also updating the ADA access, making it compliant, putting in the proper fall zones, correcting any hazards. And so in Garbert, we did do that. We've done that in Oppenheim. And the fence line also was heavily overgrown, and it has been removed. And we intend to have, again, before the end of the year, we'll have a new sign designed by the sign shop and installed. Next slide. This area is our most recent project we've been working on. Council's seen this before. It's just a diagram of where the new dog park is located, at the corner of Hilton and University. And it's just a general layout. Next slide, please. Entrance to the dog park. Later on, the agenda for your consideration is automated controlled access that I think our IT person may have a comment on if council has any questions. Next slide, please. This is our dog bone bench, made in-house by DPW Concrete Crew. And it was a little bit experimental, but I'm glad to report it did come out, and it looks great on the corner, if I do say so. Dog, a large dog print on the way in to the entrance to the dog park. The idea originally was to have a bench there for people to sit, but the dog bone bench on top of that would have covered up the paw print, so we relocated it. And it's suitable for people who maybe aren't participating, the bench is, people who aren't participating with their dogs, but they can sit in the shade right off the sidewalk and enjoy watching the other dogs run and play. This is a dog washing station drinking fountain. And as you can see, we're not going to ever lose the dog drinking bowl, because it's designed right into the concrete with the proper drainage. When we researched the dog parks, you know, goo is our friend kind of a thing, we found that most of the dog parks had a problem controlling water, and dogs became very muddy. So we intentionally designed this entrance in that the drinking fountain and would be, and the wash station would be on the exit, in concrete, near a drain, with crushed gravel around the perimeter, so that we around the perimeter so that we wouldn't experience that type of problem. So people can have their dogs, you know, into the play area if they happen to dig or, you know, get dirty. On the way out, there's a hose available. And that hose is a one-handed operation that shuts off if you let loose of the hose. So we don't have to worry about the handle because we don't have to worry about any flooding. So and then in the winter, the DPW will winterize it. And you can see that's actually a salvaged hydrant, you know, that we replumbed and made a tap out in the, in the university and trenched and brought it to the site. Next slide, please. This, this sign is very creative. I wish you could read it a little better, but City of Ferndale had, there is no poop fairy. So I won't tell you which council person, Greg, that came, came up with that, but just a few words to try to convey to the users to clean up. Also, I'd just like to point out that, you know, when you have a dog park area, you have to be concerned about, you know, dogs like to mark things. So we put a galvanized can out there. And that can was actually fashioned after DPW. We took a zip router, made the hole and bought a material from a company here in Ferndale that does automobile trim. And we covered the rough edge with that. So it works ideally for what we're doing. Also, I should mention, the landscaping on the way into the, by the entrance is urine resistant. So if dogs want to know who's been there or, you know, mark where they've been, the plants are resistant. So it might allow it to withstand a little bit. Next slide, please. This is actually all kinds of, all the furniture in the park has been salvaged, either by discontinued things that were throughout the city. But one thing that's unique about it, you can probably make out the little dog prints on, on it. But one of the very creative people that we have at the shop is at our sign shop. And you saw a representation of that in the signs that were made. Well, interestingly enough, Jason Hobbs is colorblind. So we purchased a little device that can, you can place and scan a color and they did an exact match. And one of the desires of the Park and Rec Commission was to have, whenever you enter a park in Ferndale, that there's a color theme so people begin to recognize when they're in a Ferndale park. So we scanned the colors at Garbert Park. And all of the broken, mismatched equipment, we painted the same colors so that it would appear to all match and installed them in the park. Next slide, please. Picnic bench, same way, little dog prints, the same colors as Garbert Park. And they installed today in early afternoon. Next slide, please. Oh, this is my grandson.[783.44][783.44](laughter) He's just there because he's my grandson.[788.12][788.12](laughter)
Fair enough.
And he's adorable, of course. But this is the, the break that where Jill will take over and explain some of the policies and procedures that the commission has recommended.
Excellent. All right. You can go to the next slide. He's very cute, Lloyd. All right. Next up, we're going to talk about the membership process and some of the rules and regulations. In the council packet, we included our membership application, rules and regulations and informational brochure, all of which we worked together with the Parks and Recreation Commission. Yes, sorry. Worked together with the Parks and Rec Commission over the summer to review those rules and regulations. And they provided their recommendations as well. And that's what you have in your packet. First up, the hours of operation, tentatively scheduled for March through November to give the park some rest during the winter hours to re, or if there's any repairs that need to be made. I think this timeframe, you know, it may be adjusted. We've had some requests to maybe open throughout the winter. But I think that might be dependent on, from DPW's recommendation of the fields and, you know, how the, how it's holding up. Scheduled to be opened dawn to dusk. And we'll be able to, with the access control, be able to set those times with that system. The commission also recommends that the park initially be open for Ferndale residents only with a valid membership. There was discussion at the meeting to, as we explore, opening up for non-residents as we see how it's being used and that sort of thing. As part of the membership application, each membership will be limited to three dogs per application. Memberships will be available.
And just to be clear, three dogs is the ordinance rule in Ferndale, correct? You're not really technically allowed to have more than three adult dogs.
Correct.
Okay.
Memberships will be available at the Kulik Community Center. And we're in the process of making the application available online as well. Folks will be able to fill out online. Later on in, the agenda is the proposed membership fee of $40. The Parks Commission came up with this fee. We surveyed some of the other communities and they range from free up to $75. They felt that $40 was in line with some of the communities in our area. To become a member of the, the dog park, you have to, at the time of application, provide proof of license, up-to-date vaccines, and lastly, complete a dog behavior class. Go to the next. We're excited to be working with K-9 to 5. They are customizing a curriculum for us on dog behavior. They're going to be offering the class once a month on the second Thursday at the Kulik Center. And they'll be reviewing, it's more for the owner to recognize their dog's behavior and if it's time to leave, if their dog's acting aggressive towards another dog or nervous or how to act in the dog park, how to enter and exit appropriately, that sort of thing. So we're excited, we're excited about that. So the folks will be required to complete that class at the Kulik Center before they can purchase a membership. And we're going to, after classes over on that day, will be open, our office will be open for people to purchase. So they can complete the class, bring all their documentation and get their membership right then and there. To jumpstart, since we'll be opening shortly, they have scheduled three classes, and I believe that information will go out this week. They have three classes coming up in the next couple of weeks. So that information, I believe, will come out this week so people can get registered for the classes. Is there any questions?
Any questions about the dog park?
Let's open.
Very excited, yeah.
Just to clarify on how, right now, we're waiting for access controls to do the automatic unlock and lock with the key fob. So until then, the DPW is going to go and unlock it in the morning and lock it back at night. So people will get an opportunity to use the dog park free of charge until those key, until the access control is. And we expect that to be live by October 1st.
And will the dog licenses be available to purchase online?
The licenses?
Or not the licenses, but the passes?
The membership, there is, we can do it online. The tricky part we'll have to figure out is how people will submit their proof of vaccines and license, dog license.
Next slide, please. This slide is a combination of three different parks. This slide, the picture on the right, is actually a drainage system that the DPW designed and installed at Vester Park. The same system was installed at Wanda Park. The reason for that is that at least two months of the year, both of those play structures were underwater. So we went in, excavated the area, made taps into the sewer system where necessary, drywells, great amount of pea gravel, et cetera. But now their children can play on them year-round. The other picture is a group of our residents playing basketball at Vester Court for the relocated rim from Saratoga, which was decommissioned. And so Vester, Wanda and Saratoga, Saratoga's now just decommissioned, have had some improvements. If I could read my notes, construction, the DPW construction, constructed the court, the drainage system at both Wanda and Vester, repair of the existing equipment, reestablishment of fall zone. And within just a couple of weeks, we'll have a new sign there as well. Next slide, please. Okay, but wait, there's more. I mean, all of the improvements that you've seen thus far have occurred just between end of May to today. But we are going to have, on your agenda tonight for consideration is the solar-powered dog park access control, the Marie Totlot reconstruction, which upon your approval will start actually tomorrow. DPW will be in there and we plan on having that done before, before the end of the year. We have, if we order the structure, they told us it would take a few weeks to get it. But in the meantime, we're going to prep the area, provide handicap access. We're also, one of the things that I did was I spoke to some of the neighbors that lived in the vicinity. And they were very interested in having on, I think it's Kensington is the street that it's, the park is on. Anyway, they're very interested in having a barrier for the children because it is for young, the park is for young children, so that prevent the children from running into the street. So we're going to install a fence. We're going to get the drinking fountain working. It may even already be done. We'll remove the existing unsafe structure. So and then the next project after that, which I'll have a slide on also, is Fair Park, America and Bloom Project, which is a very extensive project that requires extensive brush removal, fence removal and heavy landscaping in order to beautify that area. As I said earlier, we have a number of signs that we're making currently. Many of them are in the process already that will be installed within just the next few weeks. And we still have to remove the hockey rink at Wilson. Next slide, please. This is the proposed play structure for Marie Totlot. And so we'll put a new, the structure, a new structure, fall zone, repair the remaining equipment. We are going to create some earth play mounds there. We're going to evaluate the canopy and trim the park trees as necessary. We're going to provide access, ADA access. We'll install a new sign and we'll install, yes, a fence along Kensington. Next slide, please. America and Bloom. It shows the vicinity where it's at and the fact that it, the area that we will be improving is actually all property owned by CN. However, we've been given right-of-access. And so it's going to allow us the opportunity to improve the neighborhood and go in there and with the proceeds from the grant, do some very attractive planning. Next slide, please. Tonight in the audience is Russ and Susan White. They're asking council permission to fund a memorial play structure in Harding Park. Their daughter, Kayla White, tragically lost her life in a vehicle accident. Lifelong resident, played in Harding Park as she grew up. And it is on your, for your consideration. The Park and Rec Commission did approve this to be presented to council for consideration. The only stipulation was that the colors of the play structure would match the existing theme, which we would order in the proper colors. And some of the play elements may change. A couple of the commission members wanted some different types of activity in order to provide a more varied use for younger children. They agreed to those changes. They're here tonight in the audience. The penguin is actually a freestanding, they call it a glass fiber, not fiberglass, so I have to catch myself, glass fiber structure. It's in addition to the play structure. And as I've told, when I met with the family, that Kayla was a very big lover of penguins. And so they'd like to have a penguin in the park. And it'll be child-safe, being designed and installed by the Game Time Play Structure Manufacturer. And if Susan and Russ.
You know, I know, yeah, I was going to say, I know this is on the agenda later, but I don't know how late the meeting will go, but Mr. and Mrs. White, I'd invite you to come up and just say a few words that this is, this, this particular structure would be possible through the generosity of, of the Whites to memorialize their daughter. So come on up and, yeah. It's beautiful, by the way.
We couldn't think of anything better to honor our daughter's memory. We grew up in that, she grew up in that area. We lived in that area for 27 years now. And right now, there isn't a play structure and that bothered her really bad. And there's a lot of kids in that area. And so we have to turn something horrible into something positive. And we couldn't think of something better than to put a play structure.
Well said. We're very sorry for your, the loss of your daughter. That was such a tragedy. But to, to do something like this in her memory is beautiful. And we'll take it up later on the agenda. But thank you for your, your willingness to make that donation. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us do that.
Thank you both.
Now, projects that are in process beyond the end of the year. We are considering a splash pad. It was one of the number one requested items in the park master plan and surveys that have been conducted since then. No final decisions have been, been made. No location has been selected. We're just purely in the investigative stage. But we have had a couple of companies come to the meetings at the Park and Rec Commission and, and do a presentation. Some of them which have some very unique and creative ideas that will be, really will identify with Ferndale. So, next slide, please. Also, later on this year, because it's the warming center and because the boiler is 30 years old, we'll be recommending to the, staff will be recommending to the commission that we replace the heating system at the Kulik Center. And so that will, with upon their recommendation, we will bring it for council's consideration. And so everything but the last couple of projects that you see have, have been or will be created, I'm sorry, completed in the next, well, altogether from start to finish, maybe six or seven months. So there's been a lot of activity going on and we're going to continue with that process.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone on council have questions of Lloyd?
I just want to say that I continue to be blown away by the amount of work that the department can handle. Since you've come on board, you know, you've really, you've really done a lot of, of changes in the department, having a lot of the work become internal, tree trimming, curb replacements. So in addition to all the work that they, that staff normally does on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis, you're doing all of these new improvements and all this work. So again, I can't thank you enough for taking those on.
I appreciate that. But I would be remiss if I didn't point out the hard work of a number of individuals in the department that are out there actually doing the heavy lifting. And so, you know, on a day-to-day basis, you know, I always say, attaboys are free and so I give them out like that because they are really stepping up to the task and doing some great work. I will pass along your comments.
Thank you. And, and the other thing is, I just want to, I want to say thank you to the members of the commission who are very passionate at the meetings and conversations and very engaged in the decisions and the discussions that we have, so.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Mine's a financial question. Through the Streets and Parks Fund, I was wondering how much of these projects are covered under the new bond or as part of our regular revenue, I'm sorry, our regular budget allocation for these upgrades?
We are above, council passed a resolution that would permit us to spend money on the future park bond funds that we would be obtaining. And I think the first time would be this coming July. And so as long as we keep track of the records and they're specifically for those improvements, please correct me if I'm wrong, but as long as they're specifically kept track of for the bond improvements and we have records and it's permissible for us to make some of these improvements on, out of the current fund with the expected reimbursement to the general fund. However, that said, because most of this work is being done by DPW, very little contractor work, for instance, all the work that's been done at the, the dog park, we've had some questions as far as, you know, how much did this cost? I can tell you, I know I keep track of the numbers, we spent less than $25,000, including the fence and installation. That means a water tap in the road because, you know, DPW made the drinking fountain out of the hydrant. We did all the concrete work. We did all the landscaping. In fact, we salvaged some of the landscaping from other jobs that were, that was going to be demoed. You know, projects where the landscaping on Nine Mile had to be thinned out, so we saved it for this project. out, so we saved it for this project. And so altogether, just for the Dog Park, less than $25,000, you know, and as council's aware, the work that was done at Garbert, much of that again, was done by the DPW. The creative things were done like recycling the concrete that we've recently been, been doing the last couple of years. And as we removed the broken concrete, we crushed the concrete or have it crushed and then we used it to reestablish the walking path that was there and topped it with the more expensive material of the limestone. And so it gives the appearance that it's a much higher cost, yet it's very durable and low cost.
Thank you, Lloyd. Appreciate that. Jealous well. Thank you very much. All right. Our next item of business then would be the call to audience. This is the audience's opportunity to address council on any issue that's not on the agenda because we'd give you an opportunity to speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda. But if you'd like to address council, please come on up, give us your name and your address and three minutes is allowed for you to tell us anything that's on your mind this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council this evening?
Hi, Jeannie Davis and tonight I represent the Ferndale Senior Group and I want to invite everybody to the election year senior meet and greet for the candidates. That's on September 23rd, that's a Wednesday. It starts at 11:00 AM and it goes till noon. Admission is free. It's at the Kulik Center and you know seniors would generally have cookies, but it's an opportunity for the candidates to meet people and to be asked questions. So anybody who wants to come, you don't have to be a senior, you can just come, drop in and enjoy this. And I know I've reminded everybody that's up there and I've reminded the other people, the other candidates. So I'm assuming all the candidates that are running this year will be there. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Jeannie. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, how are you?
Great.
My name is Michael Pennington. I've worked in this wonderful city for just over five years. I'm here with concern regarding the trash receptacles directly behind 150 Vester, just north of the parking lot on Nine Mile and Woodward. More often than not, the dumpsters are overflowing with trash and it's, it's become a real issue for the local businesses and surrounding residents. People come from like all over the state to come to our city, you know, it's great here, everybody loves it. And I've seen it a few times where people are turned away because the first thing they see when they get out of their car is this unsanitary alleyway and, you know, rodents and things of that nature. Potential solutions I considered were maybe getting larger trash receptacles and/or maybe getting another day for pickup for the waste. But, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I believe it has been brought to our attention. I'm just trying to remember if that falls under. Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I appreciate it. Thank you for bringing that forward. It has been an issue and we'll get an answer for you. Thank you, Michael.
Good evening.
I'm Robert Alton. I live on Bennett Street, right behind a proposed pond shop that was passed for zoning last, you know, the last meeting. The reason why I'm here is I have a couple photos that I'd like to show you as a one way that when I talked with you guys, said that didn't exist, there's no parking on that street. There's do not enter signs, you know, a couple of them that as soon as you come off of Wanda Street, there's do not enter right at Bennett. You go a little further, there's a couple more do not enter signs. The reason why I'm here, I guess, is there's a discussion that MDOT owns the property from Eight Mile to the building, the face of it. I talked with your developer today and that's what he said. He said that it is a two-way parking area, so when you park there, you can go out to Eight Mile. Well, I talked to, I spoke with MDOT today and MDOT says they only own Eight Mile. They own a little bit of the Green Belt, the grass area, right off Eight Mile. They own their approach right there, maybe, but I'm getting this paperwork. The reason why I think Ferndale wants to say this is parking is, you know, owns owned by MDOT is if they have, there's an entrance that says an exit onto Eight Mile from this parking lot. If they own that and they own the road, that's a one-way and they can, then they can say, well, this is MDOT's deal and there's two-way parking and you can go out egress either way. But since the county owns it, well, this is a one-way. So as soon as you pull them off Eight Mile, this turns into a one-way, one-way in and a one-way out to Bennett Street. Now, why this is important is in the first two zoning meetings, the agreement was, you know, with the developer and everybody else, that the pond shop on Eight Mile that exists right now, Motor City Pond, is not going to open the door. Once, they're going to shut their doors down as soon as this proposed pond shop opens up. And the other problem, I guess, is, excuse me, I'm a little nervous here.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine.
You know, there's also a couple agreements that that building would only have one business open, that would be pond shop, but wouldn't be an auto pond. And this was, you know, supposed to go through the planning commission, just like this. Well, last, last time we were here, the councilwoman, you, you kind of led her saying that, you know, in this zoning meeting, would this have changed your mind if, you know, this discussion was that, you know, this other pond shop was to be left over for Internet Pond? And she said, yeah, that would have changed my mind and I would have, you know, and I would have asked if that was closed down. Well, it was getting sent to the planning commission as, you know, being shut down. So I don't know, it's kind of like the city is kind of forcing so issue about this pond shop. It's 14,000 square feet. It's not good for Oak Park, it's not good for Hazel Park, it's definitely not good for Detroit. It's, you know, and I sent you guys, you know, this 36-page letter or something that I got out from University of Michigan saying that crime goes up 10%. Well, you know, to me, that's kind of important, you know, and I read an article about, you know, the other day and saying that their shop in Roseville in 2010 had 600 guns. And this is gun country by Tony Aubrey and said, guys like guns. And they have an assault rifle, or excuse me, a loaded shotgun on the wall and they have a loaded pistol on the table, the desk. Well, we don't have that as residents. You know, this is an open carry concealed permit, you know, state. You know, they can walk down anywhere with an open, you know, with a loaded weapon. I'm sorry.
You're at your three minutes, so just if you could.
Okay, I'm trying.
Yep.
Okay, so the whole thing is, you know, there's 12 houses on this street, all of them are full of women. One, one house actually has two women. You know, we, we don't need this neighborhood. There's kids in the street. You know, I really wish, you know, the zoning was passed, but doesn't necessarily make this pond shop to go through. And since, you know, since, you know, MDOT doesn't own the parking lot like it was, like everyone suggests and the street and it's a one-way street, that traffic's going right on the Bennett Street. Okay. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address council this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is a public hearing and the public hearing is concerning portions of Chesterfield and Fern Streets vacation. And who's introducing that item? Is that Derek? Nope. Or is that Dan?
I'd be happy to.
Who wants it? All right.
Your Honor, as you recall at your August 10th meeting, you approved a mitigation agreement with Grand Front Railroad. As part of that mitigation agreement, the city agreed to vacate portions of Chesterfield and Fern Street. And at that meeting, after the approval of the agreement scheduled, tonight's night, tonight's meeting for the public hearing is in connection with the vacation of portions of those streets. Notice of the scheduled public hearing has been made and this is the date and time scheduled for public hearing as it relates to that vacation. A proposed resolution is included in your packet.
Very good. So I will open the public hearing portion and ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address council on the vacation of those two streets. Sir, yes? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Kaplan and I'm the property owner at 1111 East Eight Mile Road, which you need to access Chesterfield and Fern to get to my property, to make deliveries, to conduct business. Being that it was a complete surprise that, that our property was being taken and we were only able to retain council last week, that I ask that any vacating of anything be postponed for further, you know, investigation or whatever the process is going to be. But, you know, I think a little due process might be in order here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address council on this public hearing? All right. Oh, yep, sure.
Good evening, Mayor Volter.
Good evening.
My name is Jason Wong. I'm one of Mr. Kaplan's attorneys. I just want to offer a few more specifics on the points that concern Mr. Kaplan's business. As he mentioned, he owns a property at 1111 East Eight Mile. It's accessed at the east end of Chesterfield Street where Fern bought it. Mr. Kaplan's business is basically a distribution business. It operates by vehicles coming and going from his warehouse. The city is vacating the streets that lead to that warehouse. Our questions are, what does that mean for vehicles accessing Mr. Kaplan's business? Who owns the road? It's the budding property owners, not Mr. Kaplan. He's an island as of tomorrow if council approves this resolution. There's no provision that we've seen for maintaining those roads, for providing for snow clearance for the roads, otherwise operating or accessing and operating business. And in terms of vacating the roads and the process that's happening through the mitigation agreement with CN, it seems as if the city is moving in reverse. Until CN acquires the property and is ready to consolidate its holdings to proceed with its project, vacating the streets seems premature. We'd ask that council either reconsider or make some provision to ensure that Mr. Kaplan's business, which has been in Ferndale for many years and employs many people, has what it needs to continue operating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I ask the gentleman one question? Is it your position that you don't have access to your property off of Eight Mile?
Let me have Mr. Kaplan elaborate on that. Trucks do not access our property off Eight Mile.
They have to turn on the fair to get to his property.
Oh, I'll Mr. Kaplan the answer. Thank you.
Oh, hang on, one picture's worth a thousand words, all right?
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I just, I just got a quick question. In order to get to your property, you have to turn and go north on Fair, then east on Chesterfield, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then you have that little alley, easy way that you can park in front of your building. So you have to come in off Eight Mile onto Fair, correct?
Yeah, you turn, you turn north on Fair.
Fair and then east on Chesterfield.
Correct. It's sort of, it's not really.
Right, right. I'm familiar. Okay, thank you.
Just for, I'm not sure if I understand that. Is it, so there is not access off of Eight Mile?
Correct. They shut it.
Not right now.
We couldn't even pull up the verification of words.
I have it up on my Google map and I understand what you are saying.
Yeah, I see that now.
I may offer a suggestion.
Well, let me say, this is still the public hearing.
Okay.
So this is the public's opportunity to speak. We will get a chance to ask questions and ask our staff questions and make comments.
I have pictures here of what we have to put up with on a daily basis as it stands now, you know, you know, I can pass my iPhone to you.
I think the question simply was, you do not have access off of Eight Mile, right? Not sure the pictures will clarify.
To me, it's evident. To me, it's evident in Google Maps, you, there's no access. You can see the fence runs all the way through.
Right now, every day, my customers and my inbound FedEx trucks are taking between a couple minutes if it's clear, but up to an hour to get to my building once they turn off of Eight Mile Road because of the backup at the freight yard. I've been, other than I have a horrendous spinal problem, I have pictures that I've been taking over the last six months to send a letter to the mayor and the council because it's interfering with our business as it stands now. If we give up, you know, possession or whatever it's called of, of the access, you know, what's really going to happen?
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My contact is with CN. It's our understanding that Mr. Kaplan owns contiguously an adjacent property there that I believe he has on a month-to-month tenancy, which does have access to Eight Mile, currently has temporary cement structures in between that does have direct access to Eight Mile. I don't know the terms of the lease, honestly, I've never seen it, but there is contiguous ownership all the way through that wouldn't require to go through is my understanding. But as I told the gentleman this evening, before it started, when they asked, they said, you know, why are we here? How are we going to do this? We do not intend in the interim to cut them off if they need access through there and would continue to allow them in grant rights to have them to have temporary access until we, as they well know, are talking with them about acquisition of the property in its entirety where the access issue would become moot. And I think that should mitigate, at least in my view, you know, any need to delay in terms of that vacation, given that I've said it to them, I've said it here publicly at the council meeting, that we'll grant them temporary access through there until such time as we acquire the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, is there?
How about if we wait until they acquire the property before we give up the streets? I mean, this has been a done deal of a city of Ferndale certainly finished being backed with the railroad.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council on this issue during the further public hearing?
That's August 1550 Spencer. Do you have a map of that road going from back there where they're talking about Fern and Chesterfield, because I know where that's at, out to Eight Mile? Because I can say that speaking as a kid who grew up here in Ferndale, the traffic has always had to go into Chesterfield, Fern, even when it was Great Scott, Wonder Bread, you name it, those employees had to go all the way around just to come back down to Eight Mile. There's never been a road out onto Eight Mile from there. So where did you get that to show that? I mean, it's not my business, but I'd sure like to see that.
But address your comments to council.
This guy made a comment back here. He should have came up here with a plan to show what he's talking about because, you know, I've never seen it. I've lived both sides of that railroad tracks for over 30 years. And as a kid running around here, you know, I ran up and down them tracks long before it ever expanded and I've never seen a road there. I've always seen the semis roll in off of Fair to Fern, back down to even when it was Great Scott at one time and when it was Wonder Bread. And all the employees had to come in from there. They never went off of Eight Mile. I'd like to see that map there. I mean, I, you know, it's not my business, it's his business, but I'd like to see what you're talking about here.
Thank you.
That's all. That's all.
Okay. Anyone else? Alright, we will close the public hearing portion of this, and now we will allow questions and comments of staff or counsel on this item.
Well, I can say, Mayor, that I will attest to this, as probably will Chief Sullivan and Chief Collins, as long as we've been around, there's never been access from 1111 East Eight Mile onto Eight Mile itself. You'd have to take down a barricade, a fence, and put it in a driveway. Or if you wanna access it from the east end, you'd have to drive up a berm and across the railroad tracks onto the property where the new pawn shop's going. Impossible. You have to go north on Fair, east on Chesterfield, then head in easement to pull around to the front of his building to back into one of his docks. So if we vacate those streets, CN's gonna have to make some arrangements for him to have access to his property, or for visitors to have access to his property. Unless that's changed since I've retired, it's always been that way.
My understanding from the folks at CN is that they are willing to offer that access. But I guess I'm looking at our counsel and saying, is that-
A temporary basis, or?
How would that be accomplished?
Well, Your Honor, I briefly spoke with the community economic director who has not had an opportunity to study that particular access issue. You have had the public hearing, it was scheduled. Counsel for the railroad has made an offer associated with access to make sure that that particular property does have access and an ability to have its property accessed from, by vehicles and trucks. That particular agreement isn't before you this evening, that flushes that out. This is something that perhaps you could proceed this evening, or you could table for that particulars as it relates to that offer that was made by railroad's counsel to be developed and brought back as early as the next council meeting.
So in other words, we've had the public hearing, that's what we were required to do this evening. We do not have to take action until some of these questions can be addressed.
That's correct.
Alright, just help put it now. Other questions or comments of counsel?
Well, just from my side, you know, I'm looking at images right now along Eight Mile, and the closest that I see a driveway from the railroad tracks going west is Kitchen Concepts. That's the first driveway that you can pull off into off of Eight Mile, which is not this gentleman's property. He would have to go through someone else's. Oh, it is?
Can I speak again here for a second?
Sure, but please, but, well, I know you have a spine issue, but it would- If you could wait till you got to the microphone, then it would be helpful for, I'm sorry, unless that's physically not in-
It's a little difficult.
Right.
How was that handheld?
Oh, yeah.
Don't thought about that.
There you go, that's a good idea.
I'm a little familiar with this building. I worked in that building in 1966, 68, and I bought it in 95. The last time there was any access off of Eight Mile Road, it was back in the early to mid-sixties, and it was only the semi trucks. M-Doc closed it off because people were getting killed on a regular basis coming down Eight Mile Road under the Viaduct and the trucks coming out onto Eight Mile Road. It didn't make for, you know, good things. So they closed off any access. The access from Kitchen Concepts was so that the store, which used to be the surplus bread store, could have parking off of Eight Mile Road. So that's, you know, what I can tell you about the history of parking there.
And just to be sensitive to your medical condition. Are there any other questions of this gentleman while he's standing up so we don't have to make you do this again?
No, that's alright.
Appreciate it.
The trucks can't pull into that Kitchen Concepts curb car. It would not be possible for that. That's why it was all moved down to the block. It was blocked with less than two.
Appreciate it, yep.
Strictly from cars pulling in and out of the retail shop. Other than the Kitchen Concepts trucks moving, the-
Yeah. Well, they back into that lot off of Eight Mile Road and offload from the rear of the truck at the rear of their lot, you know. You're free to come down and take a look, and we can show you what-
Alright. Okay, thank you, thank you. Appreciate you getting back up again. So, other comments or questions of counsel? And as Dan indicated, there's not an action that's required this evening. What is counsel's pleasure?
I'd like to table this, it's gotta be, there's gotta be more investigation into this. CN's not clear, never have been.
I support tabling this for now, to get more clarity on the answers for these questions from the owner of the property, and work with CNN to make sure that those questions are resolved in the event that the city does vacate these properties.
I concur with table.
I'm fine with that, I just wanna make sure we move our speed so everybody's got a lot invested here and, you know.
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to see it back on the next council agenda.
Definitely.
Absolutely. Alright, very good, that appears to be the will of counsel, so that's what will happen. No action is required this evening, we'll take this up again at the next meeting.
Do you have any ideas when that is?
Two weeks from today, sir, so the 28th. Yes, Monday, the 28th. Alright, moving on now to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is items that counsel considers routine, and we enact these in one motion unless someone from counsel removes something from the consent agenda. Let me read that for you now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held August 24th, 2015. Item B is the adoption of a resolution proclaiming September 2015 as recovery month in the city of Ferndale, as submitted by Councilmember Martin. Item C is the adoption of a condolence resolution for Constance Carter, as submitted by Councilmember Lennon. Item D is the approval of a special event permit for the Dress Like the Devil Run for the Angels on Saturday, October 3rd, 2015, as detailed in the event director's summary, and with the consensus of the Special Events Committee contingent upon the listed conditions. Item E is the approval of the three-year service and maintenance agreement with KP Electronics, Inc., and to charge the expense of $37,050 to the Water and Sewer Fund Repair and Maintenance Account. Item F is the approval to purchase new playground equipment for Marie Tot Lot from Game Time Sinclair Recreation at a cost of $18,864, and that the expense be charged to the General Fund Parks Improvement Account. Item G is the approval to contract, to a contract number 15-5405, by and between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the City of Ferndale for asphalt resurfacing, concrete curb and gutter, drive approach, sidewalk, ramps, drainage improvements, structure adjustments, permanent signing, traffic signal removal, turf establishment, and pavement marking on Hilton Road from Eight Mile Road to Nine Mile Road, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said contract. Item H is the approval of a one-year agreement to use the city's southwest storage yard as a transfer site for leaves by the cities of Oak Park, Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, and Lethrop Village, and be approved, to be approved, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign that agreement. Item I is the approval of the contract with OLSA for program year 2014 and 2015, and to authorize the mayor to sign the contracts and to direct the city clerk to forward one copy of each signed contract to OLSA and a copy to the Community and Economic Development. Item J is the approval to confirm the appointment of Barbara Miller to the position of Deputy City Clerk, effective August 25th, 2015. Item K is the approval to backfill two fire department positions due to the resignation of two firefighter personnel, as submitted by our HR Director. Approval H is, excuse me, item L is the approval to authorize the city manager to fill a full-time planner position contingent upon the approval from the civil service. Item M is the approval of a voluntary separation agreement with a city employee, as submitted by our HR Director. Item N is the approval of the annual $40 dog park membership fee, and to update the 2016 city fee schedule to include the new dog park membership fee. Item O is the approval to purchase and install solar-powered wireless access control system for the Wilson Park Dog Park, presented by DA Central, for a one-time cost of $15,925 to be charged to the account as noted on the agenda. And finally, item P is the approval of the bills and payroll, as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review by the council finance committee. What is counsel's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
Your Honor, I would like to move 7G to the consent agenda for discussion.
7G, alright.
I'm sorry, to the regular agenda for discussion.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to read the proclamation related to recovery month.
Yes, please do.
The following resolution is moved supported unanimously. Substance use recovery is important for individual well-being and vitality, as well as for families, communities, and businesses. Approximately 20.7 million people in the United States have a substance use disorder, and we believe that everyone facing substance use disorders deserves the benefit of recovery. Friday, September 25th, 2015, has been designated for Oakland County's 8th Annual Substance Use Recovery Celebration and Walk. And stigma and stereotypes associated with the substance use disorders often keep people from seeking treatment that could improve their quality of life. And substance use disorders occur when the recurrent use of alcohol and/or drugs causes clinically or functionally significant impairment, such as health problems, disability, and failure to meet major responsibilities at work, school, or home. Substance use disorder recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people to live in a community of his or her choice while striving to achieve his or her full potential. And substance use disorder recovery benefits individuals with substance use disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, and also enriches the culture of our community.
Thank you. Counsel, any other, we don't have a motion actually yet, we've removed item G.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the modifications of removing item G.
I support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana.
Your Honor?
Alright, yes.
I did wanna acknowledge that one of our firefighters, Patrick Sheehan, is here. I don't know if he wants to speak to 7K, the backfilling of the firefighter position or not. I just wanted to give him that opportunity since he, I believe that is why he's shown up tonight.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Patrick, how are you, sir?
I'm doing alright. Thanks for inviting me up, Councilman Pollock. As you guys know, we've got two guys have left, and they were good firefighters, they were young, they were young firefighters, and the fact that you're gonna replace them, it's greatly appreciated. We need bodies, we need guys. I'm not gonna tell you we don't need more, but we'll take what we can get right now. And then the bottom line is, is our average age right now is me, forty, forty-eight years old, and I am what I am, but I ain't what I used to be. So we need some young guys, and I thank you very much, and hopefully this is gonna happen fairly quick, and I appreciate it on behalf of the guys, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Patrick. Any other comments on the consent agenda, from counsel or anyone in the audience for that matter? Alright, Marty, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers, Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Polter?
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Now, moving on to the regular agenda, item A is a consideration of Five Star Agreement. And who's gonna introduce that item? Is that Dan, is that, oh, our counsel? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. My name's Joe Seward, and we're getting close to getting an agreement with Five Star, and there's a proposal before the city council right now. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at it? You want me to go through the core terms?
Nope, of course we've, oh, of course we've read it. Maybe you could just briefly speak to the background, how we got to where we're at today?
Well, certainly. At one time, Five Star proposed a sign over 696 at the gas station. That was not approved. Lawsuit was filed in the Oakwood County Circuit Court. The city retained my firm to represent it. We removed it to federal court, and then discussions happened about trying to resolve the matter. We met with city council, there was a proposal by Five Star that they would take down their signs in the central business district and install the new one. Ultimately, the city council gave indications that it would approve such a resolution. There were attempts, negotiations to take place to make sure that the CBD, Central Business District sign came down, made sure it came down before or at the same time that the new sign would go up. At this point, we seem to have come to pretty much an agreement. The concern, of course, is that the city is protected, that the one sign does come down. We've had some different discussions. I drove by the sign today, and there's no advertising on either side of it, so presumably it won't be a big deal to take it down. Five Star suggested that it would cost about five, or a thousand dollars to take down the structure and so forth. That may be a little bit ambitious on their part, so that's why there are some provisions to protect the city to get it down. The city will get a deed to the easement so that it can choose whether or not any signs ever go back up. And once the agreement is signed, there'll be a permit issued. So that's kinda where we're at right now.
So are there questions of fact, or a motion would be in order before we have our discussion? As for questions-
I don't have any questions, it's been going on four years.
I'll move that city council accepts the settlement agreement with Five Star and authorities, and authorizes the mayor and city attorney to execute the agreement after Five Star provides the city with a finalized signed copy.
Second.
It's been moved by Martin and supported by Lennon. Now, is there a discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Does this agreement allow the defendant to trans, if the billboard goes through, does it allow the defendant to put up an electronic billboard over time?
Five Star is the plaintiff.
Oh, the plaintiff, sorry, sorry, wrong word.
And that's something that, the permit that would be issued is not for an electronic sign. So if there was going to be an electronic sign, they would have to go through the city process again. This does not give them that permission.
Other questions or comments?
No, well, mine's a comment, and I still stand where I have been all along. I have great issue with approving this. We have Nordens that says that we are not going to add any new signs. We've been talking about this for a couple years now. One of the things that requires a change or an exception, in this case, I believe this is an exception, is for the person or the property owner to experience hardship. I'm sorry, but this individual has not shown any issue of hardship. Basically, I see this agreement as the city caving, and I refuse to cave. That's where I stand.
If I may, through the chair?
Sure.
I will not be supporting this agreement tonight, because I think the city has some pretty sound policies in place and regulations that the planning commission has upheld, and that the plaintiff wouldn't have been able to move forward with an appropriate legal agreement as such, that the city's regulations are solid, and denying people to erect an outdoor billboard sign in our community, and I think our community decided a long time ago to- sign in our community, and I think our community decided a long time ago to limit what is known as visual pollution, and particularly along the highways. And unfortunately for me, I equate this sign as equating our urban community as suburban sprawl. And based off of the visual elements of the sign, that's exactly what we're going to look like, which is why these regulations were put in to help manage the aesthetics of our community. So, I will not be supporting this agreement.
Other comments, questions?
No, I like the fact that the deal arrived at a point where we are reducing the visual noise, if you will, or pollution in the central business district. I don't like all the billboards there. I think thinning them out is not a bad thing, and particularly with the location that the new one will go up in, I respect, but respectfully disagree with the view that we're caving or that we are making things worse.
I guess I would echo that. I don't believe, with all due respect, that this is caving at all. We've had some pretty good and heated negotiations. We've eliminated the ability to do electronic. We are not increasing the number of billboards in the city. We're moving one out of the central business district. I think these are reasonable compromises, and I will be supporting this resolution. Any other discussions, questions, comments? If not, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollock?
No.
Piana?
No.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted, and thanks for all your work on this. I know it's been going on for quite a while. Although, for attorneys, that's probably a good thing.
Yeah.
Item B is a consideration of a purchase agreement for the American Legion Hall. Wow! Speaking of a long time in coming, Derek, excited to hear about this.
Yes, sir. And we're glad to be here as well. As council's aware, over the past couple of years, the American Legion Hall that was previously purchased by the city has been used for differing things, including storage during the, you know, the reconfiguration of the court and redevelopment of the court and the police station. Once all those projects were done, the city staff was given the direction before the sale. We listed the property with CBRE. We did receive, I believe it was either eight or nine qualified offers. There was a small group of staff and council members that were put together to review those offers and to vet them against a kind of a short list of criteria, but some very specific ones. We're happy to say through that process, we've come up with a unanimous recommendation for sale of the process, or for the property. We have the buyers here, the potential buyers here. It's Mr. Douglas Ross and Christopher Growth. The basics of the agreement are that they'd offered two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for the property. The proposed development, which was part of the requirements of the offer, is they are going to do no less than, I believe, six, and are shooting for closer to eight to twelve for-sale condominium units with an adaptive reuse of the existing structure. We've seen some concepts for those, and it seems like it is feasible. The only real contingency in the agreement is the property as currently zoned only allows single-family homes, so any adaptive reuse of the building, whether it be for office, residential, commercial, would be impossible without a rezoning. So, the city does need to take some rezoning action to support the redevelopment of the property. There is a contingency in there that any due diligence money they lay out until that rezoning is done is ultimately reimbursable by us. But it's a rezoning that the selection committee and staff supports wholeheartedly for the redevelopment of the property, so we don't anticipate any use or any issues. So, we have the gentleman here, we're here, and then obviously, we're able to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, I don't know who wants to be the spokesperson, but come on up and just introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about your project. This is very...I mean, I realize this isn't the planning commission, this is just a sale agreement, but we'd love to meet you and hear what you've got in mind for that property. Good evening.
I'm Doug Ross, and this is Christian.
How are you?
Good evening.
We're respectively the development team, and we are excited about the property in Ferndale as a market, and very familiar with it. And we think the density and the transition of residential at this specific site will serve the community well and the tax base as well. So, we're excited to try to make the project work and looking forward to entering into this purchase agreement as soon as possible.
Anyone have questions of the prospective owners?
How does...well, whoever, Derek or the prospective owners, how does this impact the parking at the historical museum?
Good question. Parking at historical...
As you'll notice, that one of the conditions is, and that they have to provide as part of their site plan approval, is an irrevocable ingress egress easement over the south portion of the property into the museum parking lot. So, that is something that is recorded on the title work of the property and can't be taken away without the permission of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully, you'll sell at least one unit to a history lover who will take advantage of our wonderful historical museum right next door. Alright. Any other questions of the prospective owners while they're here? Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Nice to meet you. Questions or a motion would be in order?
I move that the city council accepts the purchase agreement for seventeen forty-one Lebonoy and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement, subject to the conditions listed below.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Pollock. Now, any comments or questions on this item?
If I may?
Yes.
Share? I really want to commend Derek and his office for really putting a solid process in place for finding the appropriate developer to maintain the value of reusing this building versus tear down and starting from scratch. And I think that is something that we value in our community of rehabbing existing buildings, because that's environmentally sound thing to do, but it also helps us maintain some of the character of our community. But I feel like we went through a very thorough process of finding the right buyer, and I feel like we're going to have a really great partnership with this developer.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions?
I do know that the ex-commander of the American Legion, Mr. Flores, was here a couple of months ago.
He was.
I don't know if he's been able to get the plaque and the rock from the front of the building yet.
Yeah, has that been...
Derek? We've...and the buyer has guaranteed us access to that, and that they'll provide that as part of the construction.
Yeah.
That's not going to be an issue. And actually, that will be given over to the historical museum.
Yep.
For storage. Okay. And display.
And you don't want to mess with Frank Flores anyways.
And if I may, my final comment is, is that we're really looking to diversify the mix of our housing stock and offering more housing choices and different products, other than single-family homes, because there is pent-up demand for apartments and condos. And so, I think this is really moving us forward in that direction, and I have a feeling they will go very quickly once they're built.
Alright, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thank you. Alright, regular agenda. Item C is the consideration of a Harding Park Memorial play structure, and this is the structure that we alluded to earlier in Lloyd's presentation from the family of Kayla White. So, the resolution before you is to authorize council to accept that and to name the facility after their daughter. It was interesting to me, by the way, this notion that we actually had a council policy on naming, which this has come up occasionally, some people will have, why don't we do this or that in terms of naming? It was very helpful to actually see the policy that council has on naming. It helps clarify some things, so that was helpful that it brought it up. But it's pretty straightforward. We would need...the policy requires that council formally approve the adoption of that memorialization, and so that is what's before us tonight, technically.
Can I make a motion?
So, yes. Mike, if you'd like to...
I'll make a motion that we approve the naming of the new play structure at Harding Park in memory of Kayla White, and the new playground equipment matches the color theme at Garbert Park, and is installed within two years of council approval.
Support.
It's moved by Lennon and supported by Pollock. Any discussion, questions on this item?
Chair, I have a question?
Yes.
Will we be having a sign dedicating the play structure to Kayla White?
I believe the family's wishes would be to have something incorporated with the penguin, so...
Incorporated with the penguin, did you say?
Yes, the penguin, the freestanding penguin.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge that this is the second set of play equipment being donated to the city, and I really appreciate these sponsors and donors of, you know, really trying to improve the quality of our neighborhoods and the quality of life in Ferndale. And I really appreciate the White family for making this very gracious and generous donation on behalf of their daughter.
Indeed. Alright. Any last comments? Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. The next item of business would be item D is the consideration of an AFSCME thirty-one twenty contract, and I think our HR director is going to introduce that item. Am I correct?
Yes, you are. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
What you have before you tonight for approval is the agreement between the city of Ferndale and the AFSCME local thirty-one twenty unit. This is our DPW crew that we spoke of earlier. This contract actually expired June thirtieth of this year. We worked really hard to come to an agreement on this. This looks a little bit different than some of the other ones you've seen in the last couple of years, in that we agreed to a one-year agreement with a one percent increase. There were some items that we wanted to resolve having to do with executing a real deep review of all of our positions and some potential restructuring to benefit our members, and with that, a deeper review of all of our salary, pay rates, pay grades, and things of that nature. So, due to that, we wanted to take a smaller bite at that, if you will, to be able to come back in a year and review where we are with that. Also included in this agreement is the elimination of longevity for new hires effective upon ratification, and a couple of other minimal items that they had asked for, an increase in a boot allowance, and some modifications to our sick bank policy. Beyond that, pretty standard language as we have adopted in our other agreements that you've seen in the last few years.
Other questions?
Well, why a one-year agreement?
The question came to mind as it related to the salary survey that we are going to have the MML assist us with, and that being that we wanted to really evaluate the positions we have in our DPW. And so, the way the current structure works is the actual laborers are divided in position-wise as a grade one, a grade two, a grade three, and so on. What we wanted to do, and budgetarily, there are only a certain amount of grade ones available, grade twos available, grade threes. Our overall goal is to really empower our current workforce and to get them to exceed to the level that they choose in terms of their skill sets. And so, to be able to develop a process by which they can move through those tiers, not just based upon budgeted positions, but based upon their own initiative and their skill sets, and then to be able to compare those roles with other communities within that salary survey. The union felt very strongly they wanted an opportunity to evaluate where we are at that point in terms of pay grades and things of that nature, and that just made sense to us too. So, that's why you'll see this one as being a one-year and not a three or a four.
Are you doing comparables with other cities? Is that's what you're doing?
Yes.
And how long is that going to take?
From the point in time that the contract is approved, we estimate about three to four months.
And how much will that survey cost us for the MML?
For this group particularly, it would be under ten thousand.
Yeah, minimally.
Mm-hmm.
Just to get comparables from other cities?
No, it's much less than that.
Oh, I think that was all of the positions. Yeah. We've kind of broken the project based upon union group, and so our intent is to really evaluate as a whole all of our different positions and what that looks like. For this group, it would be substantially less.
I think fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, yeah, because I'm a little naive in this aspect.
Yeah.
So, you're going to call Royal Oak and say, what does laborer one make? And they're going to say, well, I'll tell you if you give me five hundred dollars.
No, no, no. It's more complicated.
Yeah.
Okay, well, expound on that a little bit. I'm not understanding.
Yeah, so, the Michigan Municipal League actually conducts these salary and benefit comparisons, if you will. What we're trying to do is develop a greater comprehensive and strategic overall compensation model, if you will, that takes a look at all of our positions, what's needed to get from step one to step two, what pay is associated with those, is those compared to other communities, and then the benefits that are associated with those and how that compares. So, it's a bigger scale project than just how much does one position make at one community than another.
Okay.
Plus, we will be looking, working with MML to look also at the private industry as well, the local utility companies and things of that nature, to make sure that we are comparable. We lost, I think, six employees in one year.
Mm-hmm. Do you consider it?
Yeah, we lose more people to utilities than we do to other communities.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Alright. Now, we don't have a motion yet.
Well, I make a motion to authorize the attached changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ferndale and AFSCME Local Three One Two Zero for the period July first, two thousand fifteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Is there support?
I support.
Moved by Pollock, supported by Piana. Alright. Any other discussion or questions?
Just a comment that I really appreciate the deeper dive to help us be more strategic and provide competitive wages and benefits, certainly as the industry is drastically changing. As you mentioned, also in changing in comparison to utilities. So, thank you. I support your innovation here.
Thanks.
Alright. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. And now, we'll call it item eight E, which was formerly item seven G of the consent agenda, the agreement between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the city of Ferndale. And Councilman Pollock, you pulled that item. You would like to...
Yes, I did. So, for the last couple of years, we've been talking about redoing Hilton, and there was a time where we said that we were going to resurface Hilton and do some other kind of changes, and then last year, we said we're going to narrow Hilton down. There've been all these conversations of these changes, and every time that it's come up, I've always mentioned that I would like to see the utility lines on Hilton buried. And we've never really had any formal documentation of how much that would cost and is it worth the investment. So, I've asked the city, I've asked April, and with April, she contacted Lloyd and had him pull some figures together. So, I'm kind of going to put you on the spot, Lloyd, if you don't mind.
I can handle it for Scott Reeder.
Awesome.
Who, you know, I have to say, Scott has been a real champ in that the request came in rather late for tonight's meeting, and he was able to pull together a wealth of information on burying utilities in the public right of way. Not all of it good news. So, Scott, rather than me just paraphrase your commentary.
Yeah, and I want to add that it's...there've been a number of residents in, you know, along Hilton that have always said, you know, why do we have, you know, if we're going to do all this work, why don't we do it in conjunction with burying those lines? You know, it can't be that much more expensive. And then I was given the numbers.
And then Scott, pull some numbers together.
First and foremost, this isn't my experience. These are very large power DTE lines. It is about a mile in length, and there's power on both sides of the road. There's primary power and secondary power, and basically, it's the transmission main north-south through that corridor. From Hilton Road, you'll see laterals going east and west. Some of them are down the road, some of them are in the rear yard easements. The other thing that's on these poles is there's AT&amp;T, who has fiber optics on both sides of the road. There's also three or four different, I believe, cable companies on there. I think WOEL is on there, Comcast. You'll see a lot of school, I think, is on there also. It is an ISO, or I think everybody gets that. I pulled together some information. I looked at a project in commerce back in two thousand and six to bury two miles of DTE. The cost back then was ten million dollars. I've also had a conversation with DTE this morning, and I guess there's good news, bad news. The good news is, as part of the DTE substation they're building, they're going to redo the power poles along Hilton Road from Eight Mile to Woodward Heights. The bad news is, they said if the city wants them buried, it's ten million dollars.
Hey, that's not a problem.
I think the good news in that, maybe Lloyd and I can have some conversations with them to see what that power pole's going to look like, and maybe we can get them raised a little and get rid of any old... and get rid of any old utilities that are on there. When you do drive Hilton Road up near Nine Mile, there's, you know, it's really an eyesore. There's a lot of lateral boards up there carrying the cables. Maybe we can get a lot of that cleaned up.
Well, and is there, I know that north of Woodward Heights, they're actually in the alley.
Yes.
They were moved many, many years ago from Hilton to the alley. Is that an option with this project? If they need to remain up in the air, obviously they're going to have to take them down to replace the poles. I mean, can't they just move them over?
You know, it is probably a conversation, but I think is what you're going to do there is start putting them through the residential areas, because a lot of that area is residential off of Hilton Road. So you're going to run them north and south.
And not all of it has alleys, or I might be mistaken about that.
No, no, not all of them do have north-south alleys.
Well, there is an alley that runs perpendicular to Hilton.
Yeah, I believe on the east side there is.
On the east side, yes.
The big ugly stuff's on the west side.
Yeah, I know.
Like I said, it's a conversation we could have with them to see if it can be cleaned up.
I appreciate that. And that really was the purpose of pulling this item, was to have that conversation so that residents are aware that, you know, we did look into this, and I know a little bit of this was last minute, but, you know, $10 million is a lot to, for a one-mile stretch. And that's just DTE, that's not Comcast, WOW, AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T would be the other big expense, carrying all the fiber.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks Scott, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Appreciate you asking.
Is there a motion?
Now we know.
I move to approve contract number 15-5405 by, in between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the City of Ferndale for asphalt resurfacing, concrete curb and gutter, drive approach, sidewalk ramps, drainage improvement, structure adjustments, permanent sign, traffic signal removal, turf establishment, and pavement marking on Hilton Road from Highway M-102, Eight Mile Road to Nine Mile Road, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said contract.
Support.
Ooh, in a close call, we'll say, Piana and Martin moved and supported that item. Now, other questions or comments? I mean, you raised a good point, and I've heard that question as well. It is an eyesore, so Scott, I appreciate you offering the suggestion that maybe there's a way to work with DTE and others to at least try to unclutter the look, right? So it's worth pursuing, so, thanks. All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon? Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Moving on to the next item of our business on our agenda, which is call to council. I see our fire chief sitting right up front patiently waiting to tell us any good news from the fire department. Not forcing you, chief. Look, we're just, got extra way to walk tonight.
Your Honor, everything's going well in the fire department. We are going to be going up to Lansing this Wednesday to bury a firefighter who was collecting money for MDA when somebody was perturbed about comments made, so he turned his vehicle around and put him in dead center of the vehicle and ran him over and killed him. And he's got a wife and a child on the way, or just delivered, I'm not sure if that happens. So, not good news, but we will be attending another funeral for the firefighter.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Please, Chief, anything for the good of the community from the police department this evening?
Quick, we'll all hope good news tonight, Your Honor. First, I would like to thank the mayor and council for the support for the 911 ceremony that we had Friday night. Wish our Eagles would have done a little bit better, but the event went off very well, and we made several thousand dollars for the Feel Good Foundation in support of people that have been sickened at the, not at the Ground Zero site over the last several years. I'm also sad to report that our deputy commander of our Southeast Oakland SWAT team, Lieutenant Tom Kenyon from Madison Heights Police Department, has suffered a brain tumor several months ago, six months ago. And he has undergone one surgery, and they found that he has had several more. He's got to fly back and forth, his family, to California over the next few months. So we are having a benefit for him on the 24th in Madison Heights at the Horace Brown, at 876 Horace Brown Drive in Madison Heights at 6:00 PM. He also has a GoFundMe page, and it's www.gofundme.com/tom-kenyon. Donations can be sent to the Madison Heights Police Department in care of Lieutenant Tim Pawlowski, and we wish him and his family, his four young children, very, as much support as we can. And so that's all I have tonight, other than...
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you. Jenny, anything else from the HR department? All right. We didn't do a DDA report, Cindy, but is there anything you want to share, happenings of downtown? All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our last Get Real Outdoor movie on Vester Street is this Thursday, September 17th. We will be showing Back to the Future. Movie starts at dusk, so somewhere between 7:30 and 8 o'clock, a lot earlier this month than it has been the past couple of months. So we've had really good support, a really good turnout. We hear we're actually going to have a DeLorean there. Someone contacted us on Facebook and said, "Hey, would you like me to bring my DeLorean?"
Yes, wow!
And you fill in people take their pictures in it, so.
Excellent.
So we're hoping that all works out. That'll be on Vester Street. Get there early to claim your good seats.
Well, if it breaks down, it's probably a flux capacitor that's broke.
Exactly. And then next Tuesday, the 22nd, we are working with the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce. We were talking about the many volunteer opportunities in town and the desire for a lot of people in Ferndale to volunteer and not really know what opportunities there are. So we are working together to throw a volunteer open house, which will be at Blooms from 5:30 to 7:30 next Tuesday, the 22nd, and we've got about, including the DDA and the chamber, we've got right now 11 different groups coming to represent and let people know about volunteer opportunities. So like I said, the DDA, the chamber, the recreation department will be there, the library will be there, Habitat for Humanity, Camp Casey, Fern Care, Michigan AIDS Coalition, Easter Seals, Youth Assistance, and Renaissance Vineyard Church. We've had a bunch of other people reach out to us as well. We think we're running out of room really quickly. But not only is it a good way to find out the different areas and different ways you can volunteer and help out this community, it's also a good opportunity for the different organizations to meet each other and kind of talk about how we can share volunteers and work together to help each other achieve our goals.
If I may through the chair, can we get the Ferndale Community Foundation on that list?
I don't know if we reached out to them or not.
No, you didn't.
Didn't we? Okay, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure we can.
Yeah, me too, I didn't get anything.
All righty. All right, well, we will get you guys involved as well.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
But I appreciate it, because we've talked along, a lot of, over the years about trying to figure out how to help support volunteers and let people know what's happening. So I really appreciate that you and the chamber have taken the lead in putting this together.
We kind of think we might have to do this twice a year, just because there's been so much interest and there's so many different nonprofits that want to help. So we'll figure that out after this one.
Thank you, Cindy, appreciate it. Anything from the communications and community engagement area this evening?
I have a whole handful of things to do, that's the time, but...
Okay. All right. Joe, newlywed Joe, welcome back. Got the ring to prove it, so it really is true. Try to say it with some enthusiasm, sir, you're a new...
She's watching, Joe.
Anything from the... Awesome, congratulations.
It's all waiting for you.
Lloyd, you've had a lot on the agenda today, but anything else from DPW? All right. Jill, anything else from recreation?
Two quick announcements. Coming up on Friday, October 2nd, we are doing a, called the Exchange, and it's a live-action clue game on foot. It'll be taking place downtown. It's a ton of fun. So you get your packet of information, I think, believe they call you the day of, and tell you where you need to be, when you need to be there. And you show up, and you're looking for clues. It's usually like a murder mystery. And you go in teams of four, it's $80 per team. You can run from eight to 10. Registration is available online, you must be 21 or older.
So who's playing the body?
You are.
Do you volunteer?
No, I don't know.
They might need some volunteers for errors. The one I did back in February, they, you get your packet of information, and you're looking for either a character or a clue, so it could be, you know, something under a bench in a local restaurant, and you go out and you're looking for different people and things. It's a lot of fun, so I encourage everyone to get a team together and come on out. Secondly, coming up on October 10th is our annual Hilton Fall Festival at Martin Road Park from 11 to 4. This year, we'll be having carnival games, pony rides, hay rides, face painting, it'll be great family fun. We are looking for volunteers. We do need help with selling tickets, running carnival games. So if you'd love to volunteer, just contact our office. We can be reached at 248-544-6767. Thank you.
Excellent. Derek, anything from community economic development? All right, thank you. Marnie, anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Yes, thank you. I just want to announce that we are still recruiting election inspectors for this upcoming election and hoping to retain some new blood for the 2016 election cycle, which is going to be exciting. And to qualify, people must be a registered voter in the state of Michigan, comfortable with technology, and have intermediate computer skills, and be available on November 3rd. We are hoping to have enough people for shifts, so we're looking, it's always been a problem is having people come in at 6:00 in the morning and be here until 10:00 or midnight or whatever. So we're looking at shifts of 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, noon to 8:00 or 2:00 to 10:00. And if anyone is interested, they can find the application online or contact the clerk's office. I also want to congratulate my fabulous new deputy, Ms. Barbara Miller. She has so earned her promotion. She's a wonderful addition to the management team here, and we're very excited to formally bring her on as the deputy clerk. And in a throwback to my former position as cable director, I want to thank Charlene and Cal Font for their many years of service. They have personally done so much to help me over the years. When I was alone back there, they stepped right up, and the system has changed now, and we're not going to be requiring their assistance any longer, but I wanted to say thank you to them personally, and I'm taking them out to dinner to show them.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Well said, thank you. Thank you, Marnie. April, anything from the city manager's office?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Nothing, all right. Dan, anything from the little perspective? All right. Mayor Pro Tem Martin?
I have nothing to speak.
All right. Councilman Lennon?
I just want to say, happy birthday to the meteoric of the Lennon family.
Yes.
I'm not going to tell you how old she is.
Please don't, she'll kill you.
She will, she's watching.
All right.
All right, ma'am, way to go.
Awesome. Councilman Pollocka?
I have nothing for the evening.
All right. Councilwoman Piana?
Me neither.
Wow. And I really don't either. I want to wish all of our Jewish residents a Happy New Year and a Happy Rosh Hashanah this evening. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.
We got a little closed session.